Okay. Our call to order, please rise and join me in the pledge.
[laughing].
Wow, have it right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clark, take the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Bowman.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
Okay. Thank you. President Brawley is not available this evening, and five out of the six trustees are here. We do have quorum. We will move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. First up is a public hearing for SSA number 42, Ricky Rocketts, Director Epp.
Yes, we're in the process of creating an SSA for the Ricky Rocketts subdivision, which is where the gas and wash is going. One of those is that we have to have, one of those steps is having the public hearing. We did the ordinance that set the public hearing date earlier this summer, so today is the public hearing. I have not received any responses. I can check quickly and see if there's anybody in attendance that has anything to say, but after this, then we'll be able to adopt an ordinance at a future date that would actually establish the SSA.
Okay. So I will officially open the hearing and wait for you to check if there's anyone online to make comments. Anyone publicly that would like to make comment? Okay. No one online, nothing received. I will close the public hearing. Moving on to the next item is the public comment portion of the meeting. Again, open that up. Any member of the public that would like to address the board? I have someone for later. No one online. Anything received?
We did not receive any comments.
Okay. We will close that portion of the meeting. We will now move on to the consent agenda, and this consists of minutes of the August 8th, 2022 Village Board Meeting Executive Session Meeting, excuse me, executive session minutes of the August 8th, 2022 meeting, accounts payable through August 22nd, 2022 in the amount of $1,210,345.85. Accounts payable through September 12th, 2022 in the amount of $2,74,360.77. Accounts receivable, building report and water production report, all for August 2022. The refuse report for July 2022. Reappointment of Neil Schlup and Doug Marisak to the Montgomery Development Fund Committee. Reappointment, sorry, reappointment of Linda Chomiak to the Historic Preservation Committee. Request of waiver of temporary liquor license fee for Dixon-Murst Farms Annual Beers, Bands, and Barn Festival. Resolution 2022-017, appointing the Illinois Municipal Fund Authorized Agenda for the Village of Montgomery. And Resolution 2022-018, designating signatories for the Village of Montgomery. And with that, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Bowman. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
That carries, thank you. Moving on to our first item for separate action, contract extension with EcoClean Maintenance Inc. for janitorial services in the new estimated amount of $3,746 from October 1st, 2022 to April 30th, 2023. Director Wolf, please.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. So the Village of Montgomery staff has been analyzing the janitorial contract, and with the additional public works building coming into play, we felt that for a multitude of reasons that it would be best at this point in time to propose a contract extension to EcoClean Maintenance Services. They have been performing services for the Village, janitorial services for the last year, and have done a, or sorry, two years, and have done a satisfactory job. The basis of the reason why we're looking to move forward with the extension is two reasons. Number one, as I mentioned, the new construction and moving into the new public works facility, that will be an additional facility that we'll have to design a scope of work for. And the other reason is to accommodate and get this contract to align with the Village's fiscal year, so that, one of the things to call out is we noticed that there's a pretty significant increase in the budgeting process. We had inflation factor built in for budgeting, but obviously with this year with over 5.5% inflation, it's hard to estimate that. So once we move this to fiscal year, we'll be able to budget accordingly and be exact on our amounts ahead of the year with the RFP going out well before budget time, so it should help us accommodate that. So that is the reasoning why we are looking to move forward with an extension. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Guyer, second by Marisak. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
That carries, thank you. Moving on to Item B, under Items for Separate Action, Resolution 2022-019, authorizing a reduction in the performance security for Harts Park. Director Epp.
Yes. Back in 2018, we entered into the land donation and contribution agreement for Harts Park. Montgomery Place Apartments agreed, developer agreed to do the site work and grading work for the park site. They have completed that work, and EEI and the Park District have gone out and done the inspections. Everybody agrees that it's okay to reduce the bond. They would like to hold $10,000 to make sure that the seed is established in the area, and then from there, we'll work forward to actually getting the bill of sale over for the park. So this is a resolution so that we can reduce that bond amount from the $95,000 original down to $10,000.
Okay. Any questions for Director Epp?
When is the seeding going to take place?
The seeding has already taken place.
Okay, so this is just a situation, we're waiting for the seed to germinate. They'll probably look at it in the spring, reseed if need.
Exactly.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Guyer, second by Youngerman. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And that carries, thank you. Moving on to items for discussion, Montgomery Park Improvements Final Design Presentation, and Director Wolf.
Thank you, Trustee Spurling. So as the Village Board is aware, in 2021, the Village staff started working on a project that consisted of improvements in Montgomery Park. Some of these improvements consist of elevated stage slash seating area, Veterans Memorial, first responders, healthcare workers, and teachers memorial. The Village Board was presented with the concept design at the January 24th Board Meeting and was approved, and approved a contract with Signature Design Group on the February, at the February 28th Meeting to develop the final design. So tonight, Greg Sagan from Signature Designs is here with us to present the Village Board with the final design plans for the Montgomery Park improvements.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Good evening. Nice to be back. Thank you, Mark. Again, for the record, Greg Sagan, Signature Design Group President, and we're talking about Montgomery Park renovation. I was before this board, January 24th, and we're looking at final preliminary designs and reviewing the aspects of the project, where we're at and the future components of it. This evening, I'm here to update you, as Mark alluded to, on our final design progress. We're currently well into final design, and we've reached certain milestones, and I wanted to share some things with you as we start getting into final construction details and design. As you recall, the overall project goal, to kind of recap, the project's scope was to create a combination colorful south destination for the park. We wanted a shaded sitting area that would feature year-round picnic area and sitting area for the park, but also that it could accommodate small summer concerts and band, band performances within the park. This would be year-round and a nice amenity for the park. So in the design, as you see on the screen before you, we proposed a raised brick paver patio plaza, supported by a limestone knee wall, picking up the limestone elements within the park, both along the river and up at the North Park. Raised paver patio, radial concrete steps coming out with colorful fabric sail canopies over the top. Now, this space needed flexibility, because during Montgomery Fest, we all know we have successfully been using a mobile stage concept, and I think that mobile stage is a wonderful concept. I think it's been very successful for the Village, and we wanted to continue, so this space needed to accommodate that and then be transformed back to its former use. So the rendering we provided for you previously showed that platform, our colorful stage area, canopy sails removed, we rolled the mobile stage up on the platform, have Montgomery Fest, eliminate or pull back this, the, remove the mobile stage, and then put back to fabric canopies and resume the use of the colorful sitting area and band concert performance stage for the park. In doing so, one of the major design elements, the key design element are these fabric sails, which I presented to the board, and the board had several questions at the January presentation. I provided staff with some follow-up on it, but I just wanted to touch upon a few tonight since the board is present. Those board questions, one on vandalism, you know, can these be easily vandalized? And the sales rep tells me, at mounting heights of 10 feet or lower, they do have problems with kids dragging over picnic tables, climbing up on, on top of the sails. Our mounting heights are 12 feet and higher. They tell me at 10 feet or above, they've had no problems with kids accessing or trying to mount these fabric sail canopies. Warranty was asked, there's a 10-year warranty on the fabric sails, 20 years on the steel post components. The sales rep assures me that, in referencing other park districts, that the fabric will well outlive this warranty period, but that's the warranty they provide for the, for the fabric sails. Board had questioned, are there any examples in the areas that they can look at? I gave staff a couple sample representative park sites in West Naperville, not far from here. One has an aquatic splash park, and the other one is a park shaded sitting area containment, both Naperville Park District where these sail applications. The exact system, the shade system sails are shown, so you can see the application, and they've been very successful for the Park District in these, in these applications. They find these to be very durable, very permanent, come in a variety of colors. However, the sales rep did tell me that the colors blue, green, and tan are the best colors to select for fading, because the brighter colors tend to fade more, so if we stay within the brown, green, tan, or excuse me, blue, green, tan color range, they, they hold color much better. One cautionary note, they said, is fireworks will burn holes in these, in these fabric canopies. However, I do not believe that you currently use fireworks in Montgomery days during the festival or in the park while these sails would be up, but it's a cautionary consideration for these sails in the future use of the park. Otherwise, they come with very good reviews, and I still think it would be a wonderful element to give us this flexibility, transformation, and some color and amenities to the south park area. So moving on, this is the preliminary site plan that was presented to the board in January. It showed the plaza location approximately, with the radial steps approximately 5 feet south of the circular paver trail in the park. And that's one I want you to take note of, because underneath, we've always noted, underneath this area is a large 36-inch sanitary sewer that Fox Metro owns. We had been assuming a certain setbacks in our structures, 3 to 4 feet away from the sanitary sewer. Fox Metro came back and told staff in April that they wanted an 8 to 10-foot separation, which caused us to have to go back and do some redesign on this plaza to accommodate this increased setback. On your screen right now is the revised site plan location. We adjusted the plaza geometry slightly, we moved the whole plaza 8 to 10 feet to the north, and we adjusted the canopy piers and the canopy geometry slightly. The one thing you'll notice, in the circular trail, has now been flattened off a little bit on the south side. Because of pushing this to the north, we couldn't keep that clean circle, we had to flatten off the bottom of it. However, we still maintained a 10-foot critical width that is current within the other trail, the rest of the circle, so there's no constriction there. It actually gets wider at the radial steps, but provides a little bit of flattening to what is currently paver path. We would pull it back to the brackets you see on each end, so we provide for a nice smooth transition, and the brick pattern would lay nicely, and you would be basically a seamless retrofit. With the revised design that you see currently, and this is the final design highlighted, we've also added a 7-foot wide accessible trail that goes to the southeast. This is ADA accessible, provides access to the stage platform for the park, because the front part of it to the other park is obviously the radial concrete steps. Since this plaza is also going to have to provide a platform for our mobile stage, we have outlined and superimposed a mobile stage in on the current revised design. The brown dotted line represents the track of the mobile stage onto the site. Mark shared with me, they come in just north of the park side, would pull up right in the middle of the stage platform, unfold, and you see the entire structure is contained within the paver plaza area, with the exception of the two stairways on the back end. Those have very little loading, carry very little weight. In looking at them this year, they're set on grass anyway, there would be no problem with those overhanging in the grass, but trying to get pavement, pavers all the way up underneath it, we feel would just start making that plaza just prohibitively large for, for the otherwise intended uses. So, once the performance Montgomery Fest is done, the truck folds up, backs up, and then follows the brown line out to Mill Street, accessing the existing walk, which I believe it does currently right now. So the revised geometry, with the removal of the two large silver maples that were currently in that area, the site will provide, and the site plaza, the revised design will accommodate the new trailer very nicely. The actual location of it will be probably 3 feet closer to the audience than it was this year, so not, not a noticeable difference in where the stage would be in relationship to the audience, other than the sidewalk is going to be moved back a bit. So this is a detail, this is our final design detail of this same plaza we've been discussing, also has final grading plans with it. The stage platform, a couple things just to point out, the green line that runs through the middle of the stage is that actual sanitary sewer line. The blue line, dash lines on either side, is the 8-foot offset, the minimum offset we need to obtain and maintain for Fox Metro. You will see the main structural elements highlighted in yellow would be those elements Fox Metro would be concerned with. All of those elements, the canopy piers, as well as the knee wall foundation, are set in excess of 10 feet from the 36-inch sanitary sewer. In addition, below the plan is a section view, which is a cross-section through the plaza, which shows with the brown line, with the dash line being existing grade, our final plaza is going to be elevated approximately 18 inches above existing grade right now. So therefore, most of the subgrade excavation, the gravel base that would be put in underneath these plaza pavers, will all occur generally above existing grade, further minimizing any disturbance to the sanitary sewer below, which Fox Metro had concerns with. So we're comfortable and confident that this revised design meets the needs of the Village and should also satisfy Fox Metro.
Can we ask questions as we go?
Sure, yeah, please.
And you've, you've already answered some of my questions here. As you come up those steps, I see your, your cross-section, so you come up those three steps, you come up onto the pavers. Mark, my question is, as that, that stage comes in, and I wasn't down there this year when the stage came in, but I was down there the previous year where it came in, it came in the opposite way. With those silver maples being gone, it's a lot easier to get that stage into position. As you come in on the northwest side, I'm assuming our, like this cross-section shows, all the way around that back, all, all the way around the northwest, southeast, and I may be getting my directions messed up, but the three sides that aren't facing everybody, it's going to be graded up to those pavers, correct?
That's correct. Very soft and subtle grade will easily accommodate truck movement up onto the plaza. As you go out there now, and as you may recall, the site slopes up there fairly dramatically from the existing sidewalk towards the crab apples and back. We're basically picking up that higher grade and maintaining that, and then just supporting the front end, which is in the.
That was my other concern, because I know when they take the stage out, sometimes they bottom out on that grass there as they're coming up to that sidewalk to go out where the bands come in, come out. So would the stage come out that way?
Correct. The stage will come out and exit via Mill Street. Utilizing the brick paver, existing.
And by bringing that grade up, that solves that bottoming out.
Is a great point, has been a consideration in the grading plan on this, how we can accommodate a little bit of swale flow through there, but still make that subtle for truck movement. Okay, thank you.
What is the depth of the, the top of the platform from that last step to the, to the rear?
The depth of the platform from the last step, the platform itself.
Why don't you step up, how deep is this, this stage?
The stage from the knee wall back is 30 feet, and then the projection forward is the radial projection, the performance lobe, if you will, I believe is another 8 and 1/2 feet.
And then how far up off of the ground on that rear side will it, will it sit from the ground?
The rear side of the, the stage, which would be the south side, is at grade, it's not elevated. It's flush with grade. And then the water comes down the backside, what little drainage comes from those crab apples and yews, just horseshoes around and very subtle, is diverted around so it doesn't run onto the stage, but there's very, very subtle grading out there, because the watershed is tiny on what's coming to it. But that front lobe is kind of a play to give performers an opportunity, the radial old front, to walk out and kind of interact with the audience, where the back, you know, basically 24 by 24 feet is typically where the band, the performance area would be, so kind of a little playful extension out to the, out to the park.
And during non-performing times, we talked about this being like a sitting area, so would we put some picnic tables up in that area or something?
Correct. That would be the idea, is to work with the Park District outfit with picnic tables, or if the Village were to choose to purchase and put picnic tables there as well. But yeah, they just have a general seating area in the non-use times of when we have a scheduled event there.
And it would be covered because of the shade then?
Correct.
And it comfortably accommodates four picnic tables, three to four, there's comfortable arrangements on there, so.
Thank you.
I, I think the sunshade idea, I liked it before, but now with the, the elimination of those silver maples, they were going to be taken down when we did this anyway.
Yeah.
I, I think it, and having been through a Montgomery Fest, it's a lot sunnier out there than we, it used to be.
Well, it will still be, because the sails won't be up for Montgomery Fest.
Right.
But on a Wednesday afternoon, yeah, on a normal Wednesday afternoon, it'll be nice to have that shade back.
One point is in the removal, and as part of our contract, and with the removal of some existing trees and some others that have been removed, we will be doing some replanting, some recommendations on reforestation, if you will, in the park, so we will be carefully selecting locations and new native trees to add shade, future shade to the park, but in the short term, obviously, it's not going to do a lot of good.
I would like to add one thing quickly on that, sorry to interrupt, Greg. In talking to the Park District too, they do have a vested interest in trying to develop that area with some more mature trees than your typical 2 to 2 and 1/2 inch replacement trees out of nurseries, so the Park District has their own nursery in which they would work with us to select some, some trees for that area that are higher maturity and provide shade at a faster rate as well. So that was something that was encouraging, that the Park District could reach out to me recently about, and I unfortunately haven't had a chance to share that with Greg yet, but that is uplifting and will definitely improve the area dramatically.
Do you think we can get 6 to 8 inch caliper trees?
I didn't, I don't know, they didn't specify exact calipers, but it was something that I talked to John Kramer, their Director of Operations, and he had shared that with me, and when that time comes, we'll, we'll definitely lock, walk that area and talk a little bit more about specific selection of trees.
You know, at that size, it would probably be spade relocated, a large 90-inch spade, and given the right season, you know, and right species, they could be done, so. But above 6 would probably not be traditional bald and burlap. Any other questions on this, or we'll walk on? Okay. I'm going to briefly just touch back on the two memorial plazas, the first being the Veterans Memorial Plaza, and as I shared with you previously, this photo shows the location, the proposed location of the Veterans Memorial Plaza. It's going to be about 500 feet north of the existing plaza we're talking about, it's going to be right at the north end of the existing tree grove that's there. It's out on a very visible, highly elevated point. It'd be a wonderful, it's got great views from many different directions, and it'd be a wonderful location for this Veterans Memorial. We noted during the current Montgomery Fest, both memorial locations, this and the first responders, were not involved at all within the setup of the carnival, so given its current setup, these, these two sites would be free and clear of carnival setup, so another benefit of these sites. Proposed, as we shared with you previously, is the plaza for the Veterans Memorial, featuring permeable paver plaza, decorative accent brick banding, a central circular concrete memorial pad, the granite memorial plaza is set in the middle, stone piers anchoring a limestone seat wall as a backdrop, three flag poles with flags as secondary backdrop to the plaza location, bench seating, trash receptacles, there'd be additional landscaping and lighting provided in this. This is the preliminary design you looked at. Final design development has the plaza looking virtually similar to what it is, there's been some slight changes in size and dimensions to accommodate grading and drainage. The accent banding and pavers have been decorated up a little bit more, with a little bit more design element to them. The stone seat wall has an optional gap in it to provide for some movement from the plaza down to the river, direct movement, a little bit of view, and it may help down the road with stormwater permitting possibility. It was a recommendation, a comment from staff, and we thought it had merit, so we're including it as an option in the final design. And this is an elevation of what the final Veterans Memorial feature would look like. We feel it's a very elegant, well-proportioned memorial to honor the veterans. It features polished dark gray granite, the main tablet, which is 9 feet tall, 4 feet wide, and is flanked by two 10-inch slightly recessed textured gray granite wings. These wings are made from the same granite, and it's a monolithic piece, but these are hand-chiseled and recessed slightly through fabrication to help the pedestal stand out and give some more prominence to it. All of the text, lettering, and graphics on the memorial would be etched, stained with lithochrome or colored with lithochrome, so they're permanent to the monument, and this would be set in the, in the position and location as we shown, and we feel it would provide a beautiful, permanent memorial to those veterans who have served our country. There is also opportunity on the backside of this memorial for future input or future additions from the community or the stakeholders in field engraving and adding other graphic elements to the backside of this large pedestal monument as shown. Second memorial would be the first responders and service workers, healthcare providers and educators plaza. The site is immediately south of the Veterans Plaza in between two large Norway maple trees. The view out to the river is very nice, framed by a small grove of hackberry. Preliminary plaza design, which we shared with you in January, again, features permeable pavers, many reoccurring elements, so it unites and ties these two plazas together and also reflects and relates to the main sitting area plaza at the south end of the park. A circular plaza, semi-circular plaza design, two bench seats on either side providing seating, and limestone piers at each, each end. There would also be landscaping and uplighting in the existing maple trees, and then some seat lighting in and around the, the plaza area. Final design, again, the size was adjusted minimally to accommodate certain grade elements and certain layout proportions. It still features all the same elements, with the exception of the seat wall enclosure. In this final design and in composition with the Veterans Memorial, which has the backseat wall, we felt like the two seat walls in this area were starting to get a bit heavy, and I didn't like the look, so I wanted to make, have continuity to it, and we retained the stone limestone piers flanking it, but the removal of the seat wall, using a low native hedge to act as a backdrop, and opening up that beautiful view I showed you earlier to the river, we felt really tied this better together and didn't clutter up the space quite so much. We felt the two knee wall backdrops might be a little bit too much for this. It gives each space a little bit of identity, but they still strongly relate to each other. Final grading, all works, there would be a small step off from this plaza, one step down to existing grade as you go to the river, so no stairs or, or other problems created with the grading. Access would be flush at grade to the trail, the current existing park trail.
No trash receptacle at this one?
No trash receptacle here. We felt that the trash receptacle immediately 10 feet to the north of it, or 20 feet to the north, would serve both plazas. We could accommodate, you know, if it's a design goal, we could widen out and accommodate a trash receptacle. So that's programming, if, if that's a desire, we can obviously accommodate that. So on your screen is the final design for the first responders and healthcare, healthcare and educators memorial. This is a double-sided memorial, in that one side, the south elevation pays respect to the all first responders, and then the south side of the memorial does likewise with healthcare workers, teachers, and educational professionals at the direction of this committee. This is somewhat of a unique dynamic design, utilizes the same granite that we're using in the Veterans Memorial, in using it in different aspects. in the Veterans Memorial, in using it in different aspects of finishes, so we create those multiple colors to it. The main tablet, the main face, would be, again, the polished dark gray finish with etched and engraved lettering, these memorials each feature a twelve inch wide band, a honed finish or hammered finish, which gives it a medium gray color to it, inset within that gray band, we would recess three twelve inch diameter color medallions, porcelain medallions, epoxy set within these recesses, and they would feature the symbols and the logos of the various elements within the design, for example, first responders would have paramedic EMTs, fire and police insignias, on the backside for the healthcare, we would have nurses, we would have physicians, and then we would have educators symbols included. The graphics, and within both of these, there's a stepped granite pedestal base that creates some lift and movement into this memorial, it also creates a platform, because previous memorials I've done at this, many visitors and family like to come out and leave certain tokens or memorabilia, or flowers as part of these memorials, this provides a wonderful ledge for these, to set these memorials, as well as some photographic opportunities to set things, or have loved ones standing next to the memorial in honor. Finally, there's opportunities within these designs for plaques to further customize telling local stories, or adding things down the road, having some ability to modify this memorial as time goes by, and as the needs of the village may evolve. What I might point out with both of these memorials now, we are comfortably into the final designs of them, however, there is still opportunity for minor input, graphic changes, text or story changes based on stakeholder input and staff input, but we are getting close on the overall massing, the design, the graphics, and the layout, so. Okay. So, where we're at with the process and the final status and timeline, we've completed final designs and site plans, the grading plans, as you've seen, we've shared those with EEI, and EEI is currently working on stormwater permits for this project. As I've shared with you previously, this is totally in the floodplain, and part of it is also in the floodway of the Fox River, so permitting will be a significant step within this process, so EEI has the materials and they're proceeding with that permitting process. The goal is, is to get this permitted under a regional permit, which provide for construction of elements, recreational elements, within the floodplain and floodways of rivers, so we're hoping that these comply. Secondly, we are with the final design acceptance, we're doing final construction detailings with the goal of a timeline to have a final bid packet for you, ready to authorize for bid in January of next year, with the goal of awarding the contract in March, starting construction in April, four-month construction period has the project done in July of next year, about a month in advance of your Montgomery Fest, which was the targeted goal. Actually, the targeted goal, in all honesty, was this past year, however, for many, many reasons, that could not be met, so, that's the project timeline, that's what we're working on, and we're tracking very well to meet that end, so. I know there's still certain approvals, permitting I mentioned, staff is going to be talking to the park district more on the elements of this, so we're actively working towards that end.
I have a couple of questions, Mark, we talked about this at this last fest, any restoration that occurs around this area is going to be done with sod, correct? Because if we're pushing up against August, or we're pushing up against the beginning of August and getting this complete, we don't want seed and blanket down, because people are going to trip over the blanket.
Yeah, that's something that we can definitely talk through with Greg when we start the construction bid packets put together, I do think that, given that timeframe, it could be difficult regardless whether we use seed or sod, just given the nature of the time of the year, July being the hottest months, but yeah, there are definitely things that we will take into consideration, well noted.
The granite that we're using, or the materials that we're using, we're in a world where things aren't available, what are the lead times on these things?
Greg is going to touch on that, I believe.
Yes. Great segue into my final section here, and that's always going to be the granite memorials, and the fact that they will be on a different timeline and we are in a different world here, so, since they are artistic pieces, craftsmanship and experience of the contractor, the fabricator is critical, it would not be an element that I would traditionally throw as part of a larger bid packet and say, just work it out, and the general contractor is going to hire a sub, and we hope for the best. These are elements that typically I would pull out the scope of a larger bid and negotiate, find a capable contractor with experience to do this, and do it on a negotiated fixed fee basis, based on experience and the criteria. Because projects, or projects like this, you're looking at eight to nine month lead time from signed contract to placing it onsite. Now, we have had, we have been working on this with a local fabricator, I've had over the last twenty-five years, I've worked with one fabricator in particular, Peter Truist Monument Company out of Hillside, they work in the large cemeteries up off of Hillside, they've done four very significant pieces for me, and every one has come in just with excellent craftsmanship, on time and at budget, so it would be a company that I would be recommending highly to this board that we consider, and during the past six weeks, we've involved them in the design process, in discussions preliminarily, in getting good final budget pricing on this. The granite itself is sourced in Pennsylvania, so it's a local source, there is lead time involved, but at eight to nine months, they can get the granite, they've already sourced it through the production timeline, and at eight to nine months on the outside, so awarding a contract in October would get us a fixed piece when we're done and ready for it to be set onsite. They've visited the site, they know the site accessibility, and they're comfortable with that timeline and that duration. The benefit of that, because I love dark granite, like a black granite, which is very rich and elegant, black granite comes from India, so you can imagine the supply chain issues coming from India, I mean, you're a year and a half out to get it, the price quadruples to locally source, this granite is called Gem Mist, I've worked with it on several locations, it's a beautiful dark gray veined granite, it works very well to provide all these different finishes we're talking about, and I can provide staff with samples within the area where you can actually see this material fabricated and see what it looks like, it's really a stunning, very high-quality piece, so, I mean, obviously a very, very good observation, so. That would be something for the board's consideration as we go forward, is to pull that piece out and then authorize us to negotiate this and come back to you with a fixed fee price to provide final design, or final construction, fabrication, and placement of these two memorial pieces.
I do think that it's appropriate that the granite is sourced in the United States, considering we are doing a Veterans Memorial.
Very good point.
Yeah.
Any illumination elements to either monument?
I'm sorry?
Any illumination elements to either monument?
Both plazas would be illuminating, illuminating polished granite is very tricky, because it's like illuminating a mirror, so we can indirectly light it, but we have to be very careful on actually lighting up and how we alight the plazas, but the goal of staff from the beginning, were to have these plazas fully illuminated, so the memorials would catch some secondary illumination also in the plaza lighting.
Is there a flag pole at the Veterans Memorial?
There's three behind the Veterans Memorial.
And so the, the American flag must be constantly illuminated in the evenings, if I know my-
Permanently illuminated if the flag stays up.
Okay.
And there's also in position, wherever it's in composition, where it stands and how it stands in relation to other flags, it can never be subordinate to other flags, so.
Correct.
The flag code identifies what is the prominent and subordinate locations.
What about the area where the turbine is now, where the WPA had installed limestone and stuff?
Yes, the WPA stone walls is part of our work, is part of the final design, since it's somewhat, it's not as elaborate as redesign elements, we didn't feature that in this proposal in this presentation, but we are working on that, refurbishing those areas as part of the scope of this, and that would be part of the package that would be bid in January, so.
Are you planning to change it, or just kind of stabilize what's there?
We're going to, it's going to generally stay in the same geometry, but the walls will be taken down and rebuilt, using as much of the existing stone as possible, and otherwise similar matching stone to fill in, so.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments regarding the design that Greg has presented this evening?
I'm happy to hear that you'd use Truist, they're probably are one of the best in the Chicagoland area, and there is an office here on Lincoln Avenue, just in Aurora, so if anyone wants to see what that Gem Mist looks like, it's going to have a different element in their office, but you can see what the color is and how it's polished and how it'll look, I think that's a good choice.
So, are we just looking for confirmation that we're good with and to continue? Okay, so we're, basically, we're good with the design as it was presented, nothing in terms of changes, I know we said only minor changes, but any comments, anything else regarding what was presented this evening?
I'd be interested in seeing, kind of figuring out what you plan on doing as far as the permeable pavers, if it's a Unilock product, Bel Guard, is it, I kind, I'm a landscaper, so I kind of like the look of clay pavers as well, I mean, it immediately looks old, but I know that Unilock's got some really cool stuff.
You know, initially, we're looking at Unilock Eco Privera was going to be, you know, one of our choices on that.
Okay.
So, we can use any product, but we've had success with that, readily available, fairly durable project, you know, I agree with you, clay pavers are very nice, they carry a premium to them, but I think since we're using it in a larger scale on all three, I might stay with the Unilock product, I might recommend that.
So then, in October, this would come before us to approve a final, final everything, correct?
Sounds like the memorial we would bring for, the others would come back in January for going out.
For voting, okay.
Yes, the final design package for your approval to authorize the bid would be in January, at your January meeting, prior to that, for your consideration, would be in October, to allow staff or us to go out and negotiate a fixed fee proposal for your execution, I mean, and the sooner the better on that, so we can get the proposal and get them going, given the eight to nine month lead time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for being here this evening.
Okay.
And one more time, ask, anybody have any questions, concerns?
I would say on the memorial proposal, if that can come to us before October, the sooner the better.
Okay.
Well, that would be our next meeting then, two weeks.
It is middle of September, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Where is this year going?
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, great.
Good.
Thank you, Greg, appreciate you being here.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we will move on to new or unfinished business, this time I'll start on my left, Doug.
Halloween safety event coming up, October ninth, Sunday, the October ninth, PD's already in full motion on that, and it's a great event every year, so signs will be going up shortly related to that. And other than that, MEDC golf outing was this past week, it was, I think, the highly, the most highly attended in history. It was a great time, thank you to Trusty Guyer and Trusty Youngerman, they provided some donations.
History of the MEDC, not history ever.
It was the most profitable MEDC golf outing in their history.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did speak with Shar, she said she, that was the most golfer she had, was that day.
And everyone seemed to have a great time.
It was a very good time, I didn't win any raffles, but I lost my glasses and got them back, so it's a win. But no, again, hats off to Shar and all the volunteers, Dan, I know you did a lot, Steve, you did a lot, and they both also provided donations for baskets, which was really nice, so.
The other thing I would mention too, when I spoke with Charlene, there were several other golf outings that were moved to September, so they were technically in competition with our normal September MEDC golf outing, and she still had a really good crowd, so, I think that says a lot, that she puts on a good show, for sure. All right, anything else from Doug?
No, sir, no, ma'am.
Okay, Steve?
Mark, you and I have talked about this privately, but for public, can you go over an update on the Route 30 Orchard, as far as the timeframe and completion and those things?
Sure, so the Route 30 and Orchard improvements, intersection improvements are underway, all of the underground utilities have been completed, which basically consisted mostly of storm sewer installations, there have been a few minor setbacks, which were due to utility conflicts, which required changes to the mast arms for the signals, so those are currently under review at IDOT, they have not been approved yet, so that's going to delay things as far as the permanent signals go, but otherwise, work is continuing on the mast grading that'll allow for the widening of the intersection on the north portion of the leg, as well as the sidewalk extension to accommodate the pedestrian crossing, so, right now, they cannot give us an extension date, but they're still assuming that the majority of the work will be complete by the original completion date, which was, I believe, October seventeenth, but there'll be an obvious extension coming, the contractor deconstruction is hesitant to give that, because they haven't gotten that approval for those mast arms yet, and so obviously, once that's approved, then it'll go to the vendor to be purchased, and then unfortunately, those items do have substantially long lead time, so we'll have to work with that, but the signal, the temporary signal will remain up and active, obviously, until the permanent can be completed, so. Moving along, I'm sure with the rain that we received over the weekend, yesterday and today, obviously, will give them a few days of delay, but they are moving along.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nope? Matt?
Nothing.
Dan?
I had one thing to what Doug said, in all my years, that's the first time I've ever seen someone golf barefoot.
Yeah.
Actually, we had someone out there that was golfing with no shoes, and I didn't know that was possible. I think I've seen everything now.
All right, just to follow up on the little free pantry that I've been working on and brought to Rotary, first of all, thank you to Christina, we talked a little bit about the information she's going to put into the water bill, the newsletter for the water bills, the other thing I wanted to do was just give a thank you out to Blaine's Farm and Fleet, they donated something like ten or twelve boxes of snacks to the pantry after Montgomery Fest, so I really appreciate that, the other thing is Nicholson, teachers and staff heard about it and are very excited about it, and they also made a donation into the pantry as well, so, we are fully stocked, it looks really beautiful down there right now, I'm just very excited about that project, so, that's all I have. Oh, wait, sorry, one more personal thing I'm going to indulge, nine years cancer-free today, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, moving on to future meeting schedule, you can see all the meetings there, and with that, we have covered all the business for the evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Bowman, take the roll, please.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Bowman.
Yes.
Great, thank you, we are adjourned, have a good evening.